All right, I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. It is Tuesday, January 21st at 7:41. Sorry, we're a little late. Annie, would you call the roll?
Cobb. Kudo.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Pash.
Here. All right, since we're all here, there are no amendments to the agenda. Any questions or comments about the minutes from October 21st, November 4th, or November 18th? All right, hearing none, they are approved. And next, Ryan Porter's here from Impact. Did you think you were going to get called so quickly?
I was excited that I saw my presentation up there, so indicated that I'd be first.
All right, well, welcome back to Cleveland. Is it as cold in Long Island as it is here?
It's like 10 degrees warmer, which makes a difference at this level of cold. I was not shocked when I got here, though. It was okay.
Okay.
Totally fine. Yeah, thank you. So, thank you again to the council for having me this evening. Thank you to the community members who are here this evening, especially on this cold day and evening.
And this is probably watching.
Yes, and those watching.
Coming from their home.
Thank you, Councilman Kudo. So, I've been here every month for the past six-plus months. I do my couple of days a month, three days a month, and I've been learning a lot. So, it's been a great, great discovery experience. I've had some really great interactions with community members, some great interactions with council, staff, all sorts of business leaders in the community I've started to meet with. So, I'm happy to be here this evening. And what I wanted to do this evening was quickly run you through the beginning and the bones of my recommended action plan. So, I'm not sure if you recall, but I'll just quickly remind you that my process is fairly standard for every place I go, even though every place is very different. The steps that I try to take are fairly standard, and, you know, we usually go through this six-to-eight-month approximate discovery period where I learn a lot, right? And whether I'm learning desires of the community, or I'm learning about, you know, what's the problems with the sewers, right? I'm learning what I need to know in order to bring forth a successful development of Severnstown Center. And, you know, the culmination of that discovery process is usually us putting together this action plan. It is, to some, similar to like a comp plan, to others, similar to like, you know, a planning study. But for me, it really exudes action, right? So, it's a lot less about, you know, just kind of thoughts and more about how do we take ideas to actually the next step and get them done as quickly as possible. So, we all want to see action on the site as quickly as possible. So, I appreciate you having me this evening, and I'll quickly run through a couple of slides. I'm going to skip through some stuff that we don't even have to talk about, and I'm going to focus on some other stuff. And then, my goal is actually to finalize this in the next two weeks and have it fully submitted to you and the community. So, that's where I'm at. Any questions before I start? Okay, all right, just roll with it. So, you know, obviously, we're going to have kind of introductory sides. We're going to talk about existing conditions. I think it's important for me to talk about the joint venture with NAMDAR. I spoke a lot with you all, I think, last time I was here, about that relationship. I still think there's, you know, a lot of kind of never-NAMDAR people out there right now, understandably. But, you know, I think it's important for those who read this document to get a gist of why we ended up partnering with them versus just buying them out of the site, why that wasn't possible, how we landed where we landed, and how that's going to work going forward. So, this document will talk a little bit about that. We're going to give kind of a detailed run-through in this document of the project schedule that we've been working through in this discovery process and this kind of the next bigger step. So, on the left is kind of, you'll see in the document, when you get to read it in detail, you'll see is all the larger steps, and discovery is that first process here in this larger chart. And this is all the discovery work that we've been doing here. So, you'll see some of these are kind of green because we've had enough meetings with these folks to get a good idea for this wrap. It doesn't mean we're going to stop meeting with them. It just means we got enough for the wrap. Some of these orange meetings are meetings that we haven't really been able to nail down as much as I need to yet. They don't have to be done before this wrap is published. It's just an indication of where we're at with a lot of these groups, right? I'm going to be talking in this document about how we approach redevelopment, about how kind of this unified development approach is how we work and how we act as the conductor and this kind of master developer position that works as the, you know, the cog in the wheel that keeps everything moving, but has to collaborate with, you know, city leadership, city staff, the community, all the different kind of entities that exist here, whether it be the sewer district, or the water district, or the state, or the county. But I am acting as that glue for this process to keep everybody aligned with the same vision and goal, and how do we get that done? So, you know, we'll walk through our unified development approach, what it entails, how our engagement process works. You know, I put a picture of the first kind of News 5 article of the whole process in here, but this kind of gets into like details about how we engage other agencies, like the county and the state, and transit agencies, you know, how our, you know, goal will be to move towards in this zoning process, guaranteeing or working towards local contracting, local employment for this community as part of this project long-term. So, that's a huge benefit that I think is going to be necessary to make this project as successful as I want it to be. I'm going to go through in this document all the crowdsourcing activities and community engagement that we've done. So, the first couple of pages are basically talking about our crowdsourcing process, how it works, and what is entailed in it, from, you know, launching campaigns, starting, so, you know, we're going to be starting our website, that's a big thing. So, in the next couple of weeks, we'll also be launching our crowdsourcing website. So, that will be a website that people in the community can join, and then post ideas for uses that they want to see on the site in the future, and then actually campaign and get their fellow community members to support those ideas. So, we have an idea through that process, how much support is really behind you. Yeah, it's great that you want that coffee shop, but if only two other people wanted, and it's probably not going to work, right? So, that crowdsourcing component, right, not just those in-person meetings and getting those feedback, but that online ability and that ability to kind of post ideas and get them voted. I was just talking to a gentleman in the crowd earlier while we were waiting for you all about a bunch of his ideas, and like, you know, gave him my card and said, "I need you to post stuff," right? "We need to get some of those ideas up there, and we need to see how much support in the community there are for them." So, you know, that website piece of it, campaigns that we'll have on that website for certain ideas, and then eventually feasibility on those ideas. So, determining how feasible is that idea that has the support, right? Is it something that can financially be developed and built, right, and be supported by the market that we have here, right? That's important. We don't want to build things that are going to fail, right? We want to build things that are going to succeed. I talk a little bit in this document about our collaboration with some of the larger community and civic groups that have been working on this or looking at this. So, this whole slide is on our collaboration thus far with Seven's Action Group, right? And some of the things and the ideas that they came up with, and, you know, some of the things that we've talked to them about, and how we're going to continue to collaborate with them throughout the process. The following slides are going to talk about our crowdsourcing efforts directly with the Future Heights folks, right? So, we've done a lot of work with them, right? We had a survey that went out to, it was answered by 750 approximate community members. It was really detailed in nature. We also had a crowdsourced conversation event with them. And this document will highlight some of the takeaways from that process. And not just the takeaways, again, this is an action document, right? A recommended action plan. What are we doing about those takeaways, right? Not just that people wanted this, but how are we going to actually get that, right? So, we're going to talk a lot about that stuff. You know, we had a long conversation today, actually, particularly about some of the groups we didn't hit in the survey and we didn't get to attend that meeting, right? So, there's young groups, there are certain ethnic groups that we didn't get there, that we need to do more work to get towards, right? So, we've really identified that there are gaps in who we've reached out to, and how do we fill those gaps, right? Because we don't want to be sitting here a year, two years from now, when buildings are being built, saying, "Well, you know, we should have talked to those folks," right? So, we need to be doing that work now. It's hard work, you know? We've been working our butts off to do that over the last six months. We're not there yet, but we've identified the gaps, and we know how we're going to start filling those gaps. And we had a whole meeting today about one of those groups, from four to five, about how we were going to actually get in front of that group. And now, we have a bi-weekly meeting with city staff and other folks, just dedicated to getting in front of that group, right? So, that's the kind of stuff we're talking about in this document. This will be like a list of all the other groups that we've met with, all the other people we've collaborated with, you know, whomever may, maybe it's the Port of Cleveland, right? How are they going to work with us on financing this project, right? Whatever these organizations are that we've been meeting with, I actually have folks I'm meeting with right after this meeting, actually, about doing a potential docu-series run by students on this process and the whole project going forward, so that we're kind of engaging the youth as part of that and, obviously, documenting this process. Infrastructure has been a huge piece of this equation for us. I really want this document to scream to the community how important infrastructure is. It is not sexy. It is not something people focus on, but it is the wheels that make this thing move eventually. If you can't flush your toilet, this project won't be built, right? So, I need people to understand the complexity of that, not down to the detail, but that it has to be addressed, right? And that it has to be a huge focus of our efforts, right? Like, this document, this graphic right here is from a study that was done by the county on the sewers here, and we've already identified, you don't know what I'm pointing at, but right here and right here, we've identified a sewer bottleneck that's occurred, right? So, we believe there's a spot in the sewer collection system that the city owns that isn't a problem today, right? But, as we build out this site over time, it could become a problem, right? And we don't want to be facing that problem impromptu to, for, six years from now, right? We want to plan now. How is this zoning set up so that it addresses that, either through a fee structure, or through bonding, or through money that we get from the state or the county? How are we setting up the game board so that we know we're not going to run into a wall two or three years from now, right? So, those are really important things that, you know, most people don't focus on, but we need to figure out, right? We're going to have our like standard revitalization strategies in here. We're going to have market demand. So, we'll talk a little bit about this. This is the initial chart of a market demand, and you can't read this right now, but I'm just going to tell you that what this does is, we took, so the city commissioned a residential demand study, right? So, Zimmerman-Volk Associates actually just published today to the city and us to review the first draft of their study. They gave us their data a couple of weeks ago for us to start using to analyze. So, they looked at the demand for housing, right? They looked at everything from affordable housing to market-rate housing, from rentals to condos to townhomes, different bedroom sizes, all of that stuff. They look at all the demographics, they look at migration patterns, who's moving where in the county, in the region, right? So, very detailed study that we haven't even gone through the meat of yet, but we got the data, the basic data, a couple of weeks ago. And so, what we did with that data is we took that data combined with the existing purchasing power of Cleveland Heights as a community, and we ran some numbers on what we think the retail demand will be and can be here. So, we looked at sales leakage, right? So, we said, "How much demand for F&amp;B, food and beverage, restaurants, should this community purchase?" And I think the number, I can't even read it, but it was like $79 million or something, of purchasing power. How much is actually being captured in Cleveland Heights? It's a lot lower number, right? Because people are spending a lot of that money outside of the city, right? So, we take that and we combine that with the potential for new residential and how much purchasing power they have to figure out how much retail we think we can actually build here and support, right, and the types of retail. So, you'll be able to review that in this study and how we take actions on that next. This is the, these are the charts from the residential demand. So, they have, you know, for each component, right, affordable and market-rate apartments, how much absorption can we expect over a period of time and what we think the rents could be, right, and can support, right? Because we need to know this data in order for us to underwrite and finance this project at some point, right? And to understand how much of these apartments and retail and commercial and office and all these components, how much can they pay to fix that sewer problem, right? We have to know those answers, right? So, we have all these residential charts, and you'll be able to read them in details, obviously. And then, you know, we have other revitalization strategies. This is all about community benefits. We'll have a whole section on that. And then, last, but certainly not least, will be our recommendations around zoning, right? So, we're going to talk a little bit about form-based zoning, why form-based zoning is good, why form-based zoning is important, why we're recommending that we look at form-based zoning codes. We're going to talk about things as granular as parking, like what shared parking means, why we should be looking at shared parking, how parking should be approached. So, I'm going to stop. That's all I had. That is, you know, a snippet of what will be, you know, a 50-page document, right? But I thought, since I was making progress on it, and I was hoping to be done in a couple of weeks, rather than kind of throw together some like presentation, I just show you some of what I'm working on, right? So, I'll stop there and love to hear any questions, comments.
Questions for Mr. Porter. Councilman Larson.
So, you have your timeline. When will this become draft, when the draft become final?
I'm hoping that what I submit in the next two weeks will get some comments, but like, it gets finished a couple of weeks after that, right? This is not a document I'm expecting this board or the city to approve, right? This isn't like an official document. This is like the next step in the process, so everybody knows the direction that we were going, right? What we've learned, how we're going. So, it's a check-in. I would think of it more as a check-in than anything else, but I am still targeting zoning, rezoning the site by the end of this year. So, you know, we're already at, whatever it is, January 21st. We've got, you know, 11 months left to finish it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you, just to kind of back up. You were given 20 months initially, and we're, how many months into?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
So, you have technically 13 more months.
Yeah, I have till like, I think it's like February something or March, yeah. I think the document was signed on like June 20th or something, 15th.
All right. More questions? Councilman Pash.
This is great. This is great. I really appreciate the work that you've done on it, and I think the check-in with us is really helpful. It's probably more helpful for the community to sort of see that, hey, look, stuff is going on here.
Yeah.
You usually don't see that in a process like this, so I appreciate it. So, this sort of like, you know, gives you your framework. You know, how do you attach stuff to the framework? I mean, what's sort of like the next deliverable after this one?
Concept plan for the site.
Okay.
So, you know, we'll be working on conceptual plans for the design of the site. Where should the roads go? What kind of buildings? What kind of densities? What kind of building typologies? What kind of phasing, right, should happen? How it should look on the other side of the street? Remember, we're going to look to rezone both sides of the circle, right? So, not just the interior of the circle, but the exterior as well. And we're going to recommend that it's an optional overlay zoning. So, the people who own their property on the other side of the circle, they're not forced to use the zoning, but they have it as an option, right? But we really want to frame both sides of that street, right, over time, right? So, we'll do a conceptual plan. After the conceptual plan, we will start measuring the impacts of that conceptual plan, right? So, if we build all this, what happens to the roads, right? What happens to the traffic? What happens to the water? What happens to the school, right? Like, we have to look at all that stuff as we think about this build-out, right? Knowing that it's not happening all at once, but we need to think about it. What is it going to look like over the next 15 years, right?
So, there was a phase approach that you're taking. So, does this concept plan include the whole parcel or just phase one?
The concept plan will include the whole parcel. The development phasing and my deal with the owner will start on half of the parcel, right? So, but, but we can't just like look at half the parcel and say, "Just ignore everything over there," right? Because they're directly interlinked, right? And I don't want to be in a position where, we want to set this up so that the person who comes in to build phase five, right, already knows what check they have to write to fix this problem that occurred because they were in phase five, right? So, like, that's the mentality of this, right? The mentality of this is to look comprehensively so that there aren't as little, there will be surprises. So, I don't want to pretend there's none, right? But as little surprises as possible.
So, theoretically, your customer is really NASDAQ, the property owner. So, you come up with a conceptual plan at that, I mean, just trying to get a sense of, just trying to set expectations for the community.
Yeah, 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 no problem.
Okay, so, the conceptual plan and the development plan, does that take you through the 20 months?
No.
Or is the conceptual plan, is that?
Concepcial plan will lead to analysis of that program, which will lead to finalization, writing of the zoning code. Once the zoning code is adopted for the site at the end of this year, then we've created theoretical value, right? And that theoretical value needs to meet the goals of our partnership, mine and the property owner. If it meets the goals of our partnership, and I have some wiggle room there, then my partner has no choice but to move forward.
Got it.
Right? So, that's the way I structured this, right? And PS, my partner is very happy with what's going on right now. So, they're happy with our progress, they're happy with what's going on. I mean, I, you know, I don't spend time sitting with code enforcement every week trying to figure out the problems on the existing mall, right? Just because I like doing that, right? Like, that's not, that doesn't help move forward this development, but it helps build a relationship between, or repair a relationship, right, between this community, the city, and my partner, right? And those are the things, those little things are the things that are going to, you know, make it so that if we get to month 19 and we need more time, it's not going to be an issue, right? That's what this is about, right? So, we're just showing momentum, showing progress. And by the way, I'm the one at risk here, right? Because if we get this rezoned and I still don't move forward with my partner, you guys, you all in this community just got all this work done over the last 18 months on my dime and my time, right? And it's an opportunity for you to take advantage of in the future. I don't think that that's going to happen, but that's the way this deal was set up.
So, basically, 20 months into the, okay, so, the agreement ends, you know, February, March of next year, I haven't counted the months, but around then. We'll have a pretty good plan. I get the sense that you feel that the developer, I mean, you'll have buy-in, you'll have a zoning plan that you'll be able to work with, you'll have your, the owner who is sort of forced down this path to do this.
Mm-hmm.
So, what happens then? So...
Sure. And before then, in anticipation of that?
Yeah.
We are meeting with other sponsored developers in the market and outside the market, right? And other financing inside and outside the market. Tomorrow, I have, you know, a tour with a general contractor of the site, you know? So, all these players that will actually like finance and put shovels in the ground, I'm meeting with now, right? Bringing them along with all of us so that when we get to the beginning of 2026, they will ultimately be the ones that codify, "I've reached my goal," right? Because they will say, "Yes, we are willing to invest in this first phase at this valuation," right? And that's what proves I've gotten my goal achieved with my partner, right? So, I don't think we'll be shoveling the ground in April, right? But I think we can be working towards actual hard engineering for the initial phases of this project in April, starting that, and hopefully be shoveling the ground by the end of '26.
Okay. I think that's the data I was hoping that everybody would hear.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you characterize what you got out of the, anything jump out at you at the Future Heights crowdsourced meeting in November? Like, what kind of came to the top, you know, as far as consensus goes?
Uh...
We really need...
Tough one to do in 10 seconds.
Okay.
It was a lot of what you expect here, and then a lot of stuff that you don't expect to hear. It was a lot of, hey, the developer should have a website, we need more transparency on the process, and we should have more meetings, you know, and that kind of thing. And this is how the community should be engaged. And then, it was a lot of ideas, like, oh, we should think about a hotel for the site or a bouncy castle place, or, you know, like, all these different actual uses that people come up with. There was, there was groups that were talking about the frustration with NAMDAR and the ownership and the lack of trust there, and whether that's going to actually make, let this happen, right? So, there was, so, the crowdsourced conversation was broken down into groups. Each group got a color, right? It was like 10 groups or 15 groups. It was over 100 people there, right? Each group had about 10 people. And there was an, they did a really good job, by the way. There was a facilitator there. I mean, I've been doing, we started crowdsourcing and we called it crowdsourced placemaking in 2007. I've never been in a community that already is doing crowdsourcing since 2007, right? So, I was blown away. Not only was it amazing that it is already existing in this community, it was well-organized, it was well, you know, all the moderating and all the facilitating was really well-done. So, it was really well, the report is really well-done. I really encourage you to go to their website and look at the report, look at the survey, and look through the, they have a summary of each group, right? Super simple. It's like a paragraph for each one, right? We obviously want to look at all the backup data to that, but they have a good summary of each one. And, you know, I spent time with Director Zamp, right? And the folks at Future Heights going through all that survey data and all that stuff and making notes and saying, "Oh, why did they say this? Why that?" You know, like, "Why is Cedar Lee considered the downtown right now?" Right? Like, 65% or something of the survey respondents considered Cedar Lee the downtown today in Cleveland Heights, right? So, like, I'm sure you all have answers as to why that is, right? But like, those are the things that we look at when we do this work and we say, "How do we dig deeper, right? How do we find out more information? And how do we learn what they think makes that place great so that we can do things that are complementary and not competitive, but that carry that forward into our development, right?" It was really good data.
More questions? All right. Can't thank you enough. This is, this is so exciting, and it's, I think it's been the number-one issue for decades, really.
That's great. Yeah, no, I, listen, again, this community's been embracing of me, and it's been an amazing experience. I don't want to sugarcoat this. We have challenges, right? Like, this is not going to be easy, right? But I think if we all continue to work together like this, we're going to get some great things done. So, I appreciate the time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on now, we have communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. For those of you who have not heard, I did want to announce that there was an arrest made in the murder of Edith Moore, an additional arrest. I just wanted to let people know about that. Additionally, I wanted to take just a moment and reflect on the legacy of Martin Luther King Jr. And I wanted to bring something up that might not be pleasantly received, and that is how much disdain and, you know, anger and dismissal was aimed at Dr. King during his life, during his activities as an activist. Dr. King did not tell people things that they were comfortable hearing. Dr. King was accused of rabble-rousing and accused of being insensitive to people's feelings through his methods, of using strong language, of scolding people. Dr. King, at the time, was not pleasantly received by many of the people who espoused a dedication to the goals that he had because of the way he talked to people or his decision to be more strident in his language and actions. Toward the end of his life, Dr. King, you know, focused on coarse racial equity, but also on economic equity and dignity for all people in our community. And it reminds me, you know, in some small fashion, of what I've seen in modern-day Cleveland I think about the conversations, the debates, sometimes the fights and arguments that we've had in this community about things like affordable housing and the idea that... And the idea that you're gonna bring, I'm thinking specifically of the TWG project, and some of the concern, I'm gonna say concern generously, about adding units of affordable housing on Noble Road. And, you know, it was, it was my expectation that this community, of all communities, might embrace the idea of creating new, updated, modern, comfortable, energy-conscious housing for people who may not have a lot of money, but certainly have as much dignity and worth as any of the rest of us. That this would be embraced in a city like Cleveland Heights. I know that there are specific nuances to the arguments that people made about the exact location of 52 additional units. But there was also quite a bit of just acrimony and, in my view, really, really disturbing sentiment against people who don't have as much money as some of us do. Expectations of increased crime and murders and commentary about dumping bodies on people's lawns is just, it made me wonder about our community a little bit. And it reminded me that when you call that out, when you, when you point it out and you are steadfast in your, your description, I guess, of that kind of behavior and that kind of rhetoric, sometimes you get called a scold, or you get called too strident, or your language is not respectable enough, or you're not being sensitive to people's feelings when you express that there is a problem with demonizing people who don't have money. Yes, I witnessed that. I witnessed some pushback against that narrative that we'd be bringing additional crime and negative antisocial behaviors in if we allowed additional affordable housing into our city. I saw that when that sentiment was faced with what I think Dr. King would respect as a response, calling out that rhetoric was treated in about the same way as Dr. King was when people who, you know, sincerely believe that black people and poor people have dignity and should be treated with dignity, they just didn't like his methods, they didn't like his language. This comes back to me, this comes back to me, that we're still seeing those moments, even in Cleveland Heights, where, you know, kneeling is not the right way to protest, standing is not the right way to protest, marching is not the right way to protest, blocking traffic is not the right way to protest, yelling is not the way to protest. Calling out anti-poor rhetoric and behavior is not the right way to protest. I just, I, I think about that a lot. And I know that, that not all of us are politicians in this work, not as our true calling. And sometimes you gotta call things out. I think probably every single one of us will do that at some point. And I just want to bring up the point that during Dr. King's life, there were liberals, there were people who believed inequality, who looked down on Dr. King and criticized him for not pursuing those goals the right way. And I just want to bring this up today because I find that sometimes we do the same thing. And so I would like for everybody to reflect on our own behavior, and this includes me. Reflect on our own behavior, reflect on the behavior of our neighbors, and ask ourselves if we were in a position to do so back then, as we are right now, would we be of the camp saying, no, don't bring your direct action or your strong language here, Dr. King? When we decide that we're gonna criticize someone else for calling out opposition to equity and dignity. So I'm gonna leave it there. Thank you, Mr. President, for the time.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, let's see, sorry. City administrators' report. Mr. Horgan is not here? Okay. Report of the clerk of counsel?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. No departmental reports, or are there one? No, okay. Then we'll move on to public comment.
I just have one.
You're in.
James Williams.
The one and only.
Hi, counsel, how are you? Right. So I want to start with, be with wise men and you become wiser. Be with evil men and you become more evil. Proverbs. What is a revolution? A revolution is a significant and often rapid change in political, social, economic, or technological structures within a society. It typically involves the overthrow or fundamental alteration of an existing government or social system. Revolutions can take many forms. The American Revolution was a pivotal conflict that resulted in 13 American colonies, Virginia, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Maryland, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Delaware, North Carolina, South Carolina, New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Georgia, gaining independence from British rule. It's fair to say, no one likes being told what to do or how to live from people making more money than them. We will keep in mind, we will keep a mind's eye on the conditions of slavery and political oppression. But social revolution refers to a fundamental and rapid transformation in the social structure. It is my belief that in honoring Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream, we must make the nuclear family more accountable and responsibility in the supervision of children. In the United States, there are 1,500 or so people have been executed, 2,329 people living on death row, 3,759 reversals. While these numbers may seem significant, it is because in this modern era, policing is not what it should be. While there are many good officers, we also have those that look good on paper for the benefit and the wages. Here in Cleveland Heights as well, the administrations play a huge part in this. And I'm not talking about Mayor Sarin, but past. And it would be fair to say that this is cruel and unusual punishment, the Eighth Amendment, of the Eighth Amendment. This comment is for the new administrator, Dan Horgan, who I have not yet been able to meet or talk to. But I wanted to say, in his term, in 2016 through 2024, no record, no record meaning either you did not see a need for one or that this is not part of the blue shield that is accounted for. And we can have, and we cannot have that here in Cleveland Heights. I know that the overuse of force in the Jalen Walker case made national headlines. Can you, uh, can you, I wanted to ask him if he, if he was here today. I wanted to ask him if he can retrace what went wrong and how can you make a difference here in Cleveland Heights in holding officers and citizens accountable?
Are you just about wrapping it up? Because you, the time...
I'm sorry, I'm just, this last part.
That's fine.
Many states and cities have passed laws and ordinances called parental responsibility laws. California, Arizona, Louisiana, Wyoming, Virginia, where parents, grandparents, caregivers, and guardians can receive fines, community service, parenting classes, attending school with children, attending juvenile hearings, probation, counseling, and reimbursing the state for their childcare. We want parents out of jail to supervise their children and resources to assist the parent with transition and making a transformation into our, into our communities. And that's it, that's it for me today.
Okay, we're gonna move on to first readings for consideration for adoption. Addie?
I have resolution number 12-2025 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Frank Novak and Sons, Inc. to furnish the labor, material, and equipment necessary for sandblasting, painting, and related services for the purpose of repairing the Cumberland Pool, repealing resolution number 219-2024 in its entirety, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Yes, please.
Talked about Cumberland Pool. This still means the work is happening at Cumberland Pool. There was just a technicality on the contract. What we heard in our council meeting as a whole, the whole purpose is still to try to get this done before the pool opens.
Yes, and we were assured that was gonna happen. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, second readings?
I have resolution number 009-2025 on second reading. A resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Rodney G. Hairston as the director of finance, commencing upon his confirmation and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? I see discussion, yes, Councilman Maddox.
Just excited to have him aboard at the council approving tonight. It was a great hearing, great conversation about what you bring to the city. And I'm looking forward to the impact of this, along with the other city staff. And so I thank you for your past service and looking forward to the impact again that you're gonna make. And so I'm excited about this, it's a great way to start the year.
Councilman Petrus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hairston, thank you again for your interest in the city of Cleveland Heights. We really need your help, and so I'm really looking forward to you joining the team. So thank you so much.
All right, anybody else? Well, I, you know, certainly want to extend the welcome to you as well. You're not just part of the staff now, you're part of this kooky community, so, so we welcome you. And with that, we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Officially, welcome.
Welcome.
All right, now we move on to fourth read. Would you like to say something? I mean, I, you know, I'm just thinking, I don't, not saying you should, but, well, then step up to the microphone and if you can. I, I'm sorry, I feel like I put you on the spot, but...
I just wanted to let everyone know that I'm very excited about this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to serving all of you and giving you the financial information and reporting that you need in order to make the right decisions for the city of Cleveland Heights.
That's music, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, can we get him a cot someplace in City Hall?
I don't know what...
You're gonna be busy.
All right, fourth readings?
I have ordinance number 244-2024 on fourth reading, amended 116-2025. An ordinance enacting section 1351.35 of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, entitled Tenants' Rights and Responsibilities, introduced by Councilmember Petrus.
Vote for adoption.
Second.
We have a second, yes? All right, any discussion? Councilman Petrus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Periodically hear from a renter that they did not know their rights and responsibilities until they were in a difficult situation. Remembering that my own landlord provided information about lead and other things, I wondered if this council could ensure that landlords distribute information about tenant rights and responsibilities too. That was my inspiration for this information, for this legislation. And it happens to be the case that providing information to tenants about their rights and responsibilities was a recommendation of the Racial Justice Task Force as well. I'd like to thank Elizabeth Zach and Matt Vinsel from the Legal Aid Society for compiling a draft of rights and responsibilities for Cleveland Heights tenants and landlords. And I'd like to also thank Director Hannah, Lee Crum-Rine, and the other staff members who assisted the Housing and Building Committee in drafting the legislation. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, any other? Well, you know, I would just say that, you know, my, part of my background is working for the Cleveland Tenants Organization. And, you know, I know there'll be people that say, oh, wow, you, now you have to, you know, distribute this stuff, and you have to read it, and so forth. I will tell you that in my three years with Cleveland Tenants Organization, people who were informed, it's almost like a form of mediation, preemptive mediation, if you will. You know, having this information and disseminating it actually avoids conflict between landlords and tenants. And I think this is a bold and much-needed move. And, and thank you, Councilman Petrus, for, for working hard on this. I know it wasn't something that was easy to put together, certainly suggested by the fact that it's a fourth reading. But a lot went into this, and appreciate all the people concerned. And with that, we'll, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, now we're on to the consent agenda.
I have resolution number 013-2025 on first reading. A resolution recognizing February 2025 as Black History Month and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Sarin. I have resolution number 014-2024, 2025, excuse me, that's a typo, on first reading. A resolution proclaiming February 14th, 2025, as National Donor Day and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by all city council members. I have resolution number 015-2025 on first reading. A resolution proclaiming February 2025 to be American Heart Month and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by all council members. I have resolution number 016-2025 on first reading. A resolution recognizing February 1st, 2025, as National Freedom Day and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by all city council members.
All right. Can I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, rules are suspended. Now let's move for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All those four resolutions pass. On to committee reports. Yes, Councilman Posh.
Where's the button? On January 28th at 6 o'clock, the, the council safety and health committee is gonna meet. We've got a couple things on the agenda. Talk about better ways of maybe getting safe, safety data and heat maps, looking at the U.S. Justice Department's peace made, ours alliance grant. We're gonna get some updates from the mayor with that, see if anything council can do, anything council can be a part of to help with that. We'll be looking at some traffic calming data, talk about the Shaker Listening Project, and then talk about a public hearing that we'd like to schedule for February, March timeframe, probably March regarding street safety and deer and wildlife management.
That sounds interesting, I'm sorry, when is it?
The 28th at 6 o'clock.
Any other committee reports? Councilwoman Larson?
The Finance Committee met last week, and will be meeting again tomorrow at 12:30. The mayor and staff are welcome to attend. On January 15th, the committee discussed the 17 information requests council has given the administration, and the status of same. Will continue to discuss those items tomorrow. The committee will receive an update from the independent auditing from Chuni and Panichi that council has hired to review the city's 2024 financial documents. The committee will continue to discuss the mayor's 2025 appropriations ordinance, 011-2025. The Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee will meet on January 27th at 6 p.m. Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilman Petrus.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a reminder, the Housing and Building Committee is meeting at 5:00. As a reminder, the Housing and Building Committee is meeting at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 28th. During this meeting, there's going to be a presentation from local real estate agents about housing here in Cleveland Heights. And we have another meeting on Tuesday, February 11th. Again, 5:00 PM here on the second floor of City Hall where local housing advocates are going to come and talk about housing.
You're welcome, Councilman Cobb.
Yes, I'm going to have an administrative services committee meeting, January 27th at 4:00 PM. I'm still working on the agenda. I hope to have it published no later than Thursday more.
All right, thank you. Vice President Russell?
Thank you. The Plan and Development Committee had a meeting on Thursday, January 16th with the Noble Businesses. It was a very, very good meeting, excellent meeting. It was small, it was large, but intimate. And we talked about the Noble Road Business, Business District having a business association versus a SID. And they will be meeting again and will be having another meeting with the Noble Business Area in March. Tomorrow, the Plan and Development Committee meeting will meet tomorrow at 10:30. And we will be meeting with developers, a small room of developers to talk about zoning. And so that will be it for my report.
Righty, anybody else? Okay, old business. Do we have new business? I have something really quick. So I'm meeting with Superintendent Elizabeth Kirby on Thursday. Her, some of the students that meet with her regularly will be speaking to me specifically about occasionally coming to council meetings and letting us know what's going on in the school district. Every school district, I'm sorry, every city is, is known to some degree by the, by the schools they keep. And we always wanted to have a closer partnership with them. And what I'm hoping to get out of this is that we could have a student volunteer. I'm not necessarily saying at every meeting, but at least periodically come before council. Always great to have young people in the room and also just hear what's going on in the schools. And have the people that watch these meetings, who may not necessarily be involved, you know, like the people are with the school board meetings, get some information on the school. So that'll be, again, I'm meeting Thursday, so I'll probably report out on that at our next meeting. Any other new business? Councilmember, oh, yes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's quite right.
Oh, I'm, well, I'll save this for council member comments, I jumped the gun.
It's okay, I should just go.
Okay. Yes, I, I'd like to make the public aware that we do have some vacancies on some of our citizens committees for residents that are interested in volunteering. It's a great way to become involved in your city government and your community. We have currently three vacancies on our Citizens Advisory Committee, which is the committee that advises council as to how the community development block grant funds that we get from the federal government should be allocated. We have a vacancy for the Caldorian Neighborhood, the Fairfax Neighborhood, and then one at large vacancy. We have two vacancies on our Commission on Aging, which advises city council and the administration on matters related to our senior citizens. You must be six years or older to apply for those vacancies. We have nine to 18 vacancies on our Parks and Recreation Youth Advisory Board, which is open to anyone that is 15 to 23 years old and either attends Cleveland Heights, I'm, I'm sorry, is either a resident of Cleveland Heights or attends the Cleveland Heights schools. And this is also open to not only public students, but private and parochial students as well. And then lastly, we have a vacancy on our Transportation and Mobility Committee. And we're in particular looking for one person that is mobility challenged. That's it, thanks.
Any other council comments? Yes, Councilman Maddox.
Good evening, everyone. I'll, I'll keep this brief. Yesterday was Martin Luther King Day and I'm going to be very careful how I word this. We also sworn a new president across the United States. And for many of us, there was some trepidation, some fear, some anxiety, some nervousness. I dealt with it across the city and with many of my church members as people are questioning the future of our country and the impact that it's going to have on people that they know personally, on families, on cities and communities and agencies across this country. And I just want to remind and ask Cleveland Heights to stay on the wall. This is a, a community that has always voiced and, and lifted a standard for marginalized people. They've always spoken truth to power. We've always held leaders accountable and there is no greater time to do that than now. I, I, I'm excited to see so many people who voted in the election, but now is the time for accountability. Now is the next step in accountability. And so I want to encourage everyone to again, stay on the wall, stay educated and stay focused about these decisions that are happening that are affecting not only us here in Cleveland, but across this country. And I'll just simply leave you with this. Martin Luther King said this, and I'm hoping that this is going to impact some of you today as we think about this. Our lives begin to end the day that we decide to become silent about things that matter. Your voice matters more now than it ever did before across this country, especially when the voices of so many people are being silenced across this country. And so connect with nonprofits, connect with leaders across, in organizations and churches across this country who are doing good work, who are, are fighting that fight to make sure that we are all seen, that we are all heard, that we are all served and we are all protected. Fight to make sure that our marginalized communities are, are getting the assets that they need. Fight to ensure that the rights of your neighbors and yourself are not being rolled back over the next four years. I want to encourage you that in spite of who's in the White House, we have the true power. There is still a level of accountability that we have, not just in this state, but across this country, and it's time to use it. Do not lose hope. If we lose hope, that's all, that's it, that's it. And so I know it was difficult to watch many of those changes happen yesterday. It was difficult to watch them today. It is difficult to watch some of the hard work that so many people have fought for get rolled back already in the first day, but please do not lose hope. Martin Luther King died for this. He died for our opportunity to continue to fight. Let's pick up that baton where he left off and remind us that you could take a lot of things from us. You can reverse a lot of laws, but you cannot take my hope. We choose to give that up. And so I hope that everyone, no matter who you voted for, you have a sense of accountability for our leaders who are in office now and recognize that what they do impacts people that maybe you'll never know. But they're your neighbors and most importantly, they're human beings. And so I just want to encourage everyone to think about that. It is not a time to stay silent. It's a time for us to stay on the wall and continue to talk truth, speak truth and fight for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any, yes, Vice President Russell?
Yes, thank you. I want to also say something about Martin Luther King as well. I came back from Austin, Texas about three, four days ago where we celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King across the country. Despite my looks, but my age, I have been in the company of Dr. Martin Luther King's daughter and his son. I have walked the Bridge of Selma hand in hand with them. I have, my best girlfriend marched with Dr. Martin Luther King. So I know him and know of him very well. He stood for love and peace and no discrimination at all, nowhere. But I don't want the residents to think when people talk about the Noble Road apartment building being built there. I don't believe and no one within Cleveland Heights took that as to not wanting low income housing there. I truly believe the residents there wanted a stable community. Didn't care about apartment buildings. They wanted homeownership. They wanted something that was going to stay within that community for a decade. Not a transit area where there were already apartment buildings. So I don't want people to think that people were insensitive or, or insensitive to people who have low income. That is not true. Also, when we talk about racism, we have to be able to say we will not stand for it anywhere at all. And I wasn't going to bring this up. But when you have a flyer distributed in Cleveland Heights that showed pure racism, where it depicted six council members, one as an Oreo, one as a howdy doody pitcher, one as a turkey neck with a ponytail, one as a Barbie doll with a phonics bus. And that can be, mean a lot of different things, but I'm not sure exactly what it means because I drove for developmental disabilities for 35 years. I also drive for children in our communities, in different communities every day. I'm not sure if that depicts dialogue or my dialect, but this dialect has gone to the White House on several occasions and has also been on numerous United States committees and have talked to governors around this country. I don't talk about my background a lot because a lot of you wouldn't even know or have any idea where I've been and what I've done in my 66 years of this life and my career. But a lot of things that people talk about here, I have actually, actually take witness to and know exactly what it's about. And on this council, yes, I've, I know about racism, but I do know about love. And I know about giving love and I know about sending love to the community. And when no one talked about that flyer, that was disturbing to me. Because silence speaks louder than speaking about something. And it was totally silent from this dais about that flyer and that's racism. And I want to say, I don't know who did it, but I want to say to my colleagues here, I'm sorry that that went out. I am sorry that nobody talked about it. But if we're going to talk about Martin Luther King, then we need to talk about love in this community and giving love and accepting love and not putting out bad vibes or misconceptions of what people's thought process is on people who have low income housing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice President. Any other council comments? All right, then we're at the President's remarks. So I, I also would like to speak a little bit about Dr. Martin Luther King. Before I do that, I, there's something I don't want to be silent about. And that is, it's been on my mind for about a month now. It, it was kind of a little bit of an innocuous thing that happened at the December 19th meeting. You know, there were a lot of things that bothered me about that meeting, but I want to specifically speak about this so-called routine legislation that came before council where we transfer money. Actually, this comes out of the Finance Department. And, you know, it, it is routine that at the end of every year, we do get this, this legislation. But it's not routine that, that it's handed to us just as we're getting ready to vote. And that's literally what happened. And also, it's supposed to include what money is coming from what account to what account, and it didn't have that in there. Now, there seemed to be some ridicule to the council members at that meeting, at that December 19th meeting, who said, you know, hold on a minute, let us take a look at this. You know, we did, we did end up voting on it even without the information that we, we should have had. And we really didn't get the transfer information until January 2nd of this year. You know, which told us from what account to what account. And we really should have had that information that day. But that's not what bothered me. What bothered me, I mean, that did bother me, okay? But what bothered me was this, this kind of pressure into voting when there were questions that were not answered. And I don't want anybody on this dais to be shamed into voting. That should never, ever happen. You know, if you have a question, I want you to ask the question. And I don't want you to worry about somebody saying, hey, we do this every year, that, uh-uh. I, I'm just, I'm just letting you know. I want to hear your questions, so I'm just going to leave it right there. Martin Luther King Day, you know, the mayor was saying, you know, about the scolding. A lot of people, mayor, I don't want to misphrase, take you a little bit out of context, but you were talking about Martin Luther King, kind of like some people took it as he was scolding. I, you know, I didn't really hear him that way. He kind of appealed to, to our collective conscience in a way that mesmerized me. I, it was almost like you, you just, what here is words. And even in a contentious time where race was, you know, I mean, it still is contentious, but I mean, I just felt like, and, and the people that, that I grew up with in Cleveland Heights were like, wow, this, this guy's on to something, you know? And he was only 39 when he was murdered and so wise. And so I watched Raising in the Sun yesterday and I watched the old version, you know, the 1960 version with Sidney Poitier and Ruby Dee. Ruby Dee and her husband Ozzy Davis were civil rights leaders themselves. And, you know, there's kind of a lot to that story, you know, there's a lot going on. But one of the things that's going on is they were going to move, they got some money because the, the, the mother's husband had passed and she got $10,000, a lot of money in 1960, you know, family, a black family in Chicago. And so they, she, she went and took $3,500 and, and put it down on a house in Clyburn Park, which I never heard of, but evidently that was like an all white community. Does it not exist? Fictional, okay, so that's probably why I never heard of it. But a fictional community in, in Chicago. And, you know, then they found out they were going to be the only black family there. And a lot of stuff happens. I mean, this, this guy from the welcoming community, committee comes over and offers to buy the house back from them before they move in and all this. And I just want to say, I mean, it just made me realize how lucky we are. We live in a community where all are welcome. I mean, that's the actual motto of our community. And Susie Kesar wrote a book, she's a, a member of our community that reminds us, if you read this book, and I would strongly suggest it, it was not always that way. There was a house right behind where I live now on Fenley that was bombed in the 60s. A black family moved, had moved in there. So I, I guess I just want to say that I think it's important that we, we thank Dr. Martin Luther King every Martin Luther King Day. He made this world a better place and he made Cleveland Heights a better place. So I'm going to, oh, okay, I, I will give you a short minute. I usually don't let people talk after.
You're right, you're right, and I apologize. But I just wanted to give another known fact of Martin Luther King, that Martin Luther King went to Memphis to strike with the sanitation workers. And the sanitation workers was my union, the Asme brothers. And he went there because two sanitation workers were cold. And they climbed in the back of the truck to get warm. And the truck malfunctioned and they died. And that's what came about "I Am a Man" from Martin Luther King. So I'm just letting you know that it's a lot of background behind me and my intertwinedings with history on a real life journey. So I just want to say to our sanitation workers, while you're out here working in the cold, we respect what you do, we love what you do and continue to stay safe out there in the jobs that you do. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And I am going to adjourn this meeting at 8:50 and we are going back to committee of the whole to finish up some business we didn't get to.